All right, let's roll. Okay, welcome everyone to our November 9th Village Public Board meeting. I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I believe it's November, it's dark, and on the weather report I heard the S-word tonight, so...
No way.
No.
Not around here.
Yes. All right, so anyways, public comment. Marie, come on up. Go to microphone, introduce yourself, three minutes or less.
My mask on.
I believe it's on.
No, no, no mask.
Oh.
Not mic mask.
You can take it off while you're standing there, you're six feet apart.
Thank you. My name is Marie Chomby. As mentioned in previous board meetings, I am opposed to the decision by Mayor Bassett to declare a portion of Prospect Street a private drive. While research and options on that matter are being looked at, I want to bring to the village's attention once again that Rosa Baum and Hagberg, who are the residents claiming that portion of Prospect Street as their private drive, continue to bring their leaf and brush yard waste to West Chestnut Street for pickup by the village. I and others are denied these village services because the street was stated by Mayor Bassett to be a private drive, yet there are no consequences for Rosa Baum and Hagberg of this decision as they bring their yard waste to another street and the village picks up the yard waste. I find this act to be in violation of Village Code Chapter 38, Sections 38-1 and 38-3. Section 38-3 states that all material placed in front of the property for pickup shall be generated from that property and no other debris from any other source shall be included. And the note posted on the Village of Rhinebeck Highway Department brush pickup page reads in part, "All material should be placed in front of the property that generated the material." Why should some residents be denied village services while others find illegal ways to circumvent the situation that the mayor has created? And what steps are you going to take to stop this action? My last question, since my emails go unacknowledged, is what is your plan to remedy the water drainage issue you have left? My front yard is soggy, my driveway pools inches of water, and when I step outside of my garage door, I sink into more soggy grass. Your apparent approval for the removal of 220 feet in length and 25 feet of miter of pot to be replaced with tar and further approval of raised grade to the pavement. All of this sloping down to my property has created water drainage issue. How do you plan to correct this? And what is your estimated cost to taxpayers for correcting this issue? Any comments? No, nothing?
Can you give me the address? I mean, I'll go out and look at it personally. I don't have any comments until I do that.
Non-Prospect Street.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other public comment this evening? Very good. Hearing none. I'd like to move on to make an announcement about the Village of Rhinebeck and the Village of Rhinebeck Autism Supportive Committee. And with us tonight, we have two members of the committee, our Chair, Joe Valen...
There you go.
Oh, three, excuse me. Chris, I did recognize you behind the mask. Kathleen Marshall from Anderson Center for Autism and Chris Hyden from a committee member. I'd like to have you come up, if you don't mind, to the podium. Out front. I want to give this to you, because you deserve it. And to the board, thank you for your support for the past three years. While this committee, through a pandemic, continued to support the residents of the Village of Rhinebeck, even through the most difficult times, they never gave up in terms of their dedication to our businesses and our residents and those on the spectrum for autism. We continue to meet on a regular basis. We continue to move forward in terms of making the Village of Rhinebeck truly an autism supportive community, one of the first in the region as it's been time. And as a result, Dutchess County Tourism reached out to us a few months back and said, "We have been nominated for an award." And we said, "Wow, this is cool," right? And on November 4th, they made that announcement. Now, we had some stiff competition. We had the Walkway over Hudson, and we had all of the Dutchess County parks as part of our competition. And the competition was for the Accessibility Hospitality Award of Distinction. We all went. By the way, we had to buy our own tickets to go see this, but we were there, you know, and expecting to just partake. But lo and behold, right? We were nominated and we received first place. There is only one place for Dutchess County Tourism Accessibility Award of Distinction to the Village of Rhinebeck and the Autism Supportive Committee. So at this time, I'd like to give this to our Chair. Thank you. Press is on.
And thank you for your leadership.
Well, let me just read some more. In addition, we received a citation from Dee Barrett for recognition of this event. And we also received from New York State Senate, Senator Sussarino, the 41th Senate District, a recognition of our accomplishments. So I'd also like to give this to you all, and thank you for everything you've been doing. And let's keep up the good work for the Village of Rhinebeck.
Thank you.
Gary, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
On behalf of the committee members and myself, I just wanted to acknowledge the foresight on part of this board to establish this committee. And as Gary mentioned, trying to do our work during the pandemic when businesses were, as you are well aware, were closing down and struggling and whatnot, was certainly more than we had bargained for when this started several years ago. But I will speak for myself, and I think for the committee, in saying that what kept us going, what kept me going certainly, was the fact that we were doing such good work to help people who are often in our communities otherwise invisible, who don't have... When you see somebody with autism, you don't immediately identify that person as such. It's only when you start to interact with him or her that it becomes obvious that they have needs and that their needs are significant. And it's been a real labor of love to work to make the Village of Rhinebeck a more supportive and accessible community for our community members as well as for visitors to the community who have children, adult relatives on the spectrum. And that's what keeps me going, that's what keeps us going, I'm sure. So thank you for doing what you've done and for supporting us in the work that we will continue to do. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next on your sub-agenda is kind of a routine thing. And this is for the 2022 extension for CIT and BEAT. CIT is a training program as well as BEAT that is sponsored by the county, and it's for our police force. And every year, our police, along with all of the other Dutchess County agencies in the police, participate in the CIT training and BEAT. And the county asked us to sign this resolution, which we have done every year, to participate and continue doing the CIT training for police departments. So I give this to the board for any questions. I have reviewed it with Sergeant Dunn. Even though we do training outside of this that overlaps this, it still gives time for our officers who have not participated in our training to get the training through the county. I could read the whole thing, but it's like six pages. So I'm going to bypass that with the summary, if that's okay with the board.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 extension of CIT and BEAT. Second? Thank you, Rick. Any questions? If we have no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Brand, I'm going to turn it over to you for the WIA grant application resolution.
So we are going to go in for a grant request for the water plant upgrades. We did the engineering report. Now they're finalizing the application for the WIA funding. The WIA funding opened. They just announced this month that it was finally open. So that's for the grant. Also available perhaps is low interest funding for the debt service that we have, because it's respective 60% grant and 40% would be funded by the village. So our engineer needs a resolution for us to move forward. We've already passed the bond resolution. So this is just a mere formality for EFC, which is the Environmental Facilities Corp., which is a public benefit corporation that doles out grant money based upon need and et cetera. So the resolution reads, "Water system evaluation and upgrade project, whereas the Village of Rhinebeck, New York, has established a public benefit of the Water System Evaluation and Upgrade Project, whereas the village plans to improve water system operations through the upgrade of the water treatment plant and the water tank, and whereas the village has the opportunity to apply for grant funds from the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIA, which may fund up to $3 million or 60% of the total project cost, and whereas the total project cost is estimated at $6.5 million approximately, the village is prepared to contribute matching funds, we agreed $300,000, I think, in our resolution earlier. Therefore, be it resolved, the village is authorized to submit the WIA grant application. The mayor is authorized to sign the WIA grant application, and the village agrees to provide the matching funds required for the WIA project through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program." So the application will be... Package will be given to us in a couple days for our review. But I would propose that we pass a resolution approving that, the resolution I just read, or a motion for a resolution.
Second? Thank you, Lydia. Any questions?
Question, not particularly about this, but where are we with the water rate evaluation? Is that... That's new, that's soon, right?
So it's soon. I did talk... Brandy will be... Brandy's running from time bond, is running late. She should be here in about 10, 20, 10 minutes.
Okay, great.
She could give us an update on that, but the short summary is they've been working very closely with Karen and other pooling data, pooling the data together. There has been a slight delay only in terms of collecting all of the data, so...
Okay.
I don't have a DND, but maybe...
They're gathering information. They had a conference call with me also.
Oh, did I?
And they're gathering information, yeah.
Great. Okay.
My notes moving.
Great.
The number three here, does that really coordinate to committing to financing the rest of our match in a specific way?
No.
No?
No, it doesn't require a down payment. And we can shrink the project if we don't get, you know, the full... We can alter the project.
Okay.
That's reassuring.
If we don't want to pay the full freight.
Okay.
So you're saying if we don't get the full amount...
That we expect we can shrink.
But usually you don't get a sum, or you don't... It's either you get it or you don't get it.
Well, we might have to shrink the scope then, if that...
Yeah, I don't... I've never seen where they said, "You've asked for six, and we're only going to give you two." When they ask for six, they're either going to say yes or no, I think.
Yeah, but then we would also might be available for low interest funding, so...
Right.
That doesn't mean we're done with the EFC. It means we may change the scope.
Right. It'll be... They'll offer short-term, low-interest funding and draw down on the grant first, and then draw down on that, and then convert it to long-term funding.
You're going to have to pull the mic closer to you, Karen, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just agree with Brandt that what EFC will do is, as they did with the other project, they will offer short-term, low-interest funding and draw down on the grant, draw down on that low-interest funding, and then convert it to long-term funding. So we will have time to determine the scope.
Got it.
So what happens is they have a better bond rating than we do, even though we have a good bond rating. So it brings it down, the cost monthly payment down a little bit.
Got it.
There's no more engineering work to be done, correct?
No, well, they're finalizing it. Based upon the engineering report, they're tailoring that to the application.
Just so everybody knows, Delaware Engineering produced the engineering report, which is driving this request.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions? I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Go for it. Thanks, Brandt.
You're welcome.
I'm going to skip the next item, the DCT call for planning, until time bond gets here. So, Brandt, while you got the floor, you said you didn't need time bond for the water line, the ERP, the Emergency Response Plan.
No, this is a federal mandate. We had to do a vulnerability, Emergency Response Vulnerability Study based upon the water tower, the water plant, and then the lower lip pump station and the intake and everything. So we had... You guys approved that, we had that report. Now we need to do the Plan of Attack, you know, the ERA, which is the ERP, which is the Emergency Response Plan. So this is also mandated. We came in about $2,500 under budget for the evaluation, for the risk evaluation. So this is taking the findings of the risk evaluation and doing a Plan of Attack. So the ERP would include the following components: Strategies and Resources to Improve Resilience, including physical security and cybersecurity at the facilities; Plans and Procedures for Responding to a Natural Hazard or Malviolent Act that threatens safe drinking water; and actions and equipment to lessen the impact of a malviolent act or natural hazard, including alternative water sources, which is tough for us; relocating intakes and flood protection barriers; and strategies to detect malviolent acts or natural hazards that threaten the system. And the scope of services is to review the existing Emergency Response Plan to conduct a kickoff meeting, to update the ERP base. In other words, we did this a few years back, so we have an existing plan, so we would review that and update it. Conduct a kickoff meeting, review that with the village staff, get feedback, and then finalize the report. So the estimated cost is $11,900. Time Bond is our village engineer, and they also did the vulnerability assessment, so they're a natural fit for this. So I would like to get approval on that expenditure.
And a second?
And that's the outside limit. It could come in lower.
Dick? Thanks, Rick. Questions?
I just... I was wondering if Kathy, who's the new Emergency Response Person, is in the loop with the plan.
That's a good question.
She'll certainly get... She should have the... Both of these reports.
Right. So we... That's a great idea. We need to rope Kathy into this. So she's... Kathy's working on our Emergency Response Plan as a review for the village. She's working on pulling that package together for us. Right now, she's spending most of her time working on Asher Dam to make sure that that fits into the Emergency Response Plan as well. So we could give this to her as well. So a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the amendment, you're authorizing... Just to amend your resolution, you're authorized, I mean, to sign the task order, right?
To approve it for your signature, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good, I will sign.
Do you want a copy of the chair, or do you have one?
No.
He's got one.
I'm not paperless yet, so...
Okay. Brand, I'm going to keep you on task here. Request for sledge hauling, not me.
So we want to go out for bid on the sledge hauling. We got... Noticed that Violia was going to terminate our... Going to continue service up until November 30th. I've been working with them, and they've given us an extension. We need to get the cake to a dryer form, and we have the sophisticated screw press, which we did about eight years ago. So we're tweaking that, and we're doing the lab work. But we do have until the end of December with the carting agreement we have now with Violia. So I would like to go out to a public bid on sledge hauling services. Just a public bid. And Martina, I've talked to Martina about this. We used to do this annually, so we have all the stuff somewhere, you know? Because we did this every year, so I'm sure Martina and I can figure it out.
Yeah. Is it better to offer a multi-year deal for somebody? I mean...
I don't know. I think we should just scope it at one year, right? I mean, just for now.
Let's take a vote on it.
If we get overturned, maybe we can...
And then we'll go into discussion. We can go into discussion after we approve the... Let's vote on the RFP, and then we'll go into discussion and then come back, okay?
Okay.
So made a motion. Do we have a second for your RFP?
Second?
Thanks, Rick. All right, now let's go into discussion on... Your question was...
Well, my question was, if we go for multiple years, could we get a better rate? And is there a way maybe to ask an RFP, like get a price for one, two, and three years, something like that?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. My thinking is that, like the garbage hauling contracts I have, they're annual, but, you know, with the carting companies, I don't... The whole thing is in flux because incinerators are changing the rules. There's all sorts of strict contaminant, new contaminant stuff coming out and moisture requirements, and I don't know if anyone wants to go out three years on an obligation.
Fair enough.
Does this also... I mean, this also has to do with some of that composting research that you two are doing?
Yeah, if we choose to compost on our own in two years, then we're stuck in a three-year deal.
Yeah, that may be why we just want to go year to year.
One year with an option to renew for a year, and that way...
Yeah.
Is there any way to include in the RFP, like, you know, preference given to places that compost the biosolids to haul it to a composting site rather than having it incinerated?
We don't ask for incineration in it, so that would be an option available to them?
Is that an option?
No, but to really to put forward the desire to do something more environmentally friendly, if possible. I mean, I don't know if...
We could encourage it.
Yeah, we could probably tweak the RFP, yes.
I think part of what we're trying to do as a local government is show that there's a demand for these services. That helps the market then create solutions. You know, we desire a vendor that would provide those services. I don't know if there are any that exist in the vicinity, but I do know that currently it's being hauled to Connecticut. So how about hauling it to Rockland County where they compost biosolids? Why not?
I think that's ready...
I just know incinerators and dumps, so if you want to hit an option, we can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it should be part of the RFP to have that as part of considering the object.
Yeah, we can agree on that.
Yeah. And...
We'll work on it. Or you can be a part of writing it out, writing the scope.
I mean, this was all predicated the fact that our current hauler is no longer hauling and has...
Well, we're going to try to win in the back, perhaps, but...
Oh, because he gave the business...
Well, I'm going to be very neutral about who we pick, select.
Yeah, but he gave the business over to another company, right? So they... They're transferring their business, but it's a good time for us to...
I think what it is, is the incinerator wants to just do their... To land the sludge thing right there on... They just want to do it for themselves. They don't want it... They don't want...
So they've stopped taking outside sludge?
Yeah, sort of like that... We were trying to talk to Tri-Muni about whether they would take outside stuff too, but not everyone is doing that.
Yeah. Karen, do you have any updates from Tri-Muni?
I don't, but I will check again, see if they'll do that.
But if they want, they could be a bidder. Right? If they were interested, they could be.
Right, if the RFP were such.
Right. All right. So any other questions? I mean, we've kind of summarized this, that we're just going to make sure it includes environmental friendly app asked within the RFP.
And a deadline of December 10th?
I suggest 30 days because we don't have a lot of time. We're going to be sitting on some sludge if we're not going to...
How much storage space do we have?
Have to start composting it.
Then we're all going to have to grab a shovel and...
Oh, boy. All right.
Thank goodness it's winter.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Brandt. Brand, I still don't see Brandy here, so I'm going to keep you on. Wastewater Utility Truck Purchase.
Okay. I don't know... Oh, I have that one. But Karen, did you want to lead with this, or do you want me to?
I haven't. So... So the wastewater department was previously approved for a Ford Ranger. After considering their needs for a utility body, they are returning to the board to request the purchase of a 2022 3500 utility truck and plow. The cost of the truck, with the New York State government discount of $5,200, is $56,962.50. Plows not included. We had budgeted $10,000 for principal and interest for the Ranger. Less the New York class account and the Capital Sewer Reserve, the available fund balance in sewer is $641,605.
So the advantage would be that they would have a utility truck. You know, the water department has a utility truck. They can have their tools be more secure and better organized, et cetera, et cetera. And this is... We don't want to plow with the Ranger because it is harsh on pickup trucks. We could plow with this.
But we have a truck to plow.
We do, but then the plow went down last year, and, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have two. But that isn't the only reason why they wanted to upgrade to a utility truck.
So how... What's the payment? Well, let's make a motion, and then we'll go into questions. Sorry. So you have a... There's a motion to approve wastewater utility truck purchase for $56,962? Is that what I see? The final price? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so let's get into some discussion.
Yeah, I'm... I mean, we had this whole truck conversation last year during the budget process. I know, we all drove each other crazy over it. And I'm sort of somewhat astonished that we're jumping from a Ford Ranger, which is a light utility truck, to a 3500, which is, like, in some places considered a commercial vehicle. So how did we go from like a Ranger through 150, 250 to 350? Like, that's a huge difference in truck muscle power. And, you know, I feel like if we'd known that we needed a truck that big, then that would have been something that we talked about during the whole budget process in June.
This is new to me. I'm just entertaining the idea. It doesn't hurt to... I mean, they are a utility, and it doesn't hurt to have a utility truck.
No, I get that. I mean, but were they going to use the Ranger for? Was it just like running around and checking? No, that was water. What were they going to use the Ranger for?
Same thing.
Same thing.
Okay.
They can't have... You know, when they have three, four guys going, they can't be stranded, you know, without a car. If someone has... If one person is out...
So remind me again how many trucks wastewater has?
This would just be the two.
Okay. And the one that we just bought was for water, not for wastewater, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So Lydia, how this came about was Brian was over at... Ugly's talking about Ranger, and then he's asking them if he can have a plow put on it. And they're like, "Well, no, it's not really just kind of a truck that you could put a plow on it." So then it was like, you know, "If that's not what you're looking for, maybe you should go back to the board and talk to the board." So that's how it came about.
Got it. Got it.
But the point is, we have a truck to put a plow. But it did break down.
It was down last year, yeah.
But it... There's a good truck there, the plows.
How... Is that one of the trucks that is on deck to be retired anytime soon?
No.
Not soon, soon.
No, it's in great shape.
Do we know what year that one is? Fleet manager?
I'm thinking it was six or seven. Something five to seven years old, I don't know.
Okay.
Based upon our previous truck discussion.
I know, right, yeah.
Some... All right, go ahead.
I don't know. I mean, like, and Karen just showed me that it would go, if we're going to have... going to finance it, it would go from a $10,000 annual payment to a 14,400 annual payment?
Well, we do have a substantial fund balance.
Totally.
So, Karen thought maybe we should just pay for it.
We should just buy it.
And then we really have kind of, sort of overlooked some of the capital needs because we're focused on the we grant for water and we don't want to...
Yeah.
We want to have a lot of plumage for the, the water request and not, we've sort of forsaken some of the things that's going on.
No, yeah, I mean, that was part of the whole truck conversation in general, was that our whole fleet had been kind of ignored for a while.
So, I'm just presenting it...
Is there, is there a question with, we're buying, we're buying a lot of trucks this year. I mean, for every department.
Right.
Is there a question that six years, seven years, eight years down the road, we're going to be caught in the same mix and we're going to be purchasing another big box of trucks?
Well, we're staggering.
And we're not staggering them here.
We're staggering them here. In this sense, you guys, well, we're, we're getting the two the same day.
Right, well, that...
For highway, but for, we're actually staggering these.
Yeah, that was an emergency issue though, yeah.
Well, no, I know.
Brandon, I have two questions. And one is if we have a plow truck, do we need a second plow truck? And also, if these guys are basically running around the village, do they need to run around the village in a heavy vehicle?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I just, I think that the gas consumption on the vehicle of this size is...
Is monumental.
Yeah.
It's a huge difference between that and a Ford Ranger. That's, I mean, that was sort of the point of the story.
So, my question is how much service do we need to do outside? Karen, do you have a feeling for, I mean, we know, we have a good handle on water breakage, but I really don't have a good handle on sewer line breakage.
We have the lift stations, you know? And, you know, sometimes we have, we have grease inspections and then...
Grease inspections, but yeah, that's...
We have, you know, clock, you know, jetting that needs to be done, things like that. They're out, they're out in the distribution system.
I mean, but how much of...
Not as much as water, because you...
Yeah. I mean, how, how, how much are these trucks used for just simple transportation versus utility truck type things? And that's the extent of my knowledge of what wastewater does in a utility truck. So, you know, I, I'm not pretending to be an expert here. I'm just noticing that there's a huge difference between a light utility vehicle and a heavy duty truck.
Well, you, you do have to bring some equipment when you do the...
Yeah.
Lift station stuff.
Do they haul a trailer?
Well, this will haul quite a bit.
Do they have a trailer?
No.
No, because they don't need all the trailer.
But you have one problem.
Yeah, but they don't use it. I mean, they don't, they don't, I mean, we use it. We, they use our trailer. We use our trailer, our trailers all the time, but they don't need a trailer. That's for the...
I don't think so.
But maybe that's an idea, a closed trailer that could be organized and keep tools and everything that they need that they could hook up to and when they need it, as an alternative to a larger utility truck.
I mean, in a way, I'd rather have a runabout vehicle and then save the plow, because plowing is so hard. Save the plow vehicle for plowing and heavy stuff and then if they're just running around, run around in the, you know, run around in a lighter car. I mean, that's at least...
Yeah, we don't want to put wear and tear of plowing on two different trucks. That's actually a really good point. Like, if we're going to destroy one of the trucks, let's just destroy one of the trucks, not both of them. Although the goal is not to destroy any of them.
Well, the little one, the pickup would get destroyed, but I think the bigger ones can handle it.
Well, the little one would get destroyed if it was used for plowing, but we wouldn't use it for plowing because this is too little.
This seems like overkill.
Yeah, this seems like overkill to me too. Does it seem like overkill to you, Brad?
But do we have an ask for them to come back to say, let's look at a justification that justifies, that justifies the use based on service and the, and breakdowns and et cetera? Kind of, kind of some factual data?
Wanted some more substantial, I mean, they are holding it for us for today anyway, but it's not going to last forever. And that's the other thing, I think the lead time in getting it is, they have it.
So, I mean, like, they didn't have a Ford Ranger, but they did have a 3500 and so...
I don't, do you recall, Karen, what the time is on that Ford Ranger?
Um, they did have the Ford, I believe that they did have the Ford Ranger.
Okay.
They said it was just a conversation that...
Okay.
That Brian was having with them about putting a plow on the Ranger.
Yeah, and maybe a trailer is better, having a trailer, you know, the, the trailer to go.
I mean, you know, if you can go back to Brian and just ask him why he needs a plow on both of his trucks, that would be helpful, because if he actually does need a plow on both of his trucks and he can justify it, then I think that's...
I think he's just, that's based upon last year how they had a plow down and...
Yeah, but I mean, like, we're all dealing with trucks that...
Do you always need a redundant plow? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
We've got plows.
All right, it sounds like we're going to, let's, we're going around, so let's...
Table?
Let's, I'd like to table this to get...
Table it, and I'll just give him our feedback and see if he has any more.
Yeah, and come forward with some more justification.
If he has any more justification.
Right.
Brandy is here. Thank you, Brandy. All right, so we're going to jump back up into the, into the schedule to discuss the Dutchess County Transportation Call for Planning for Proposals. So, this has been a discussion which we've been floating around and just, I'm going to summarize it a little bit in terms of, this was predicated on the fact that we recently received through the town notification that the bridge on Montgomery going over Route Nine at the Landsman Kill is going to be replaced in 2023. And it was going to be, and during that replacement process, it's going to last for approximately a year and a half. Around the village, we've been always discussing and going forward and trying to say, what can we do to improve the access, accessibility into the village and also some street calming effects that go into reducing speed through the village, because they're state roads, they're at 30 mile per hour, but yet we still know that if we put trees or reduce the size of road, we get an calming effect on traffic coming into, from the south side and from the north side. So, when they put this request out, Dutchess County Transportation put out a request, Call for Plans, this was an opportunity for us to get into their and on their agenda for asking them to help us with planning for the bridge, because I think we want to be intimately involved with how that bridge is done in terms of sidewalk, pedestrian passageways, bike passageways, and runoff into the Landsman Kill, all the environmental impacts. But we also want to say, this would be a perfect time to, if they're going to do the bridge and redo all of that, can we extend that project further north to kind of create a better plan coming forward into the village for traffic? And the same thing would be on the south side. So, we started the conversation with Dutchess County Traffic and they came back and in the meantime, I asked Time Bond to put a proposal together to say, from an engineering perspective, could they participate with us and with the county to put this plan together in terms of how would we work with pulling, pulling this all together? And one of the thoughts was, they first said was, we want a big plan. So, we said, we'll give you a big plan. We have the bridge, we have the access coming in from the south side, we have the access from the north side. And if you think about it, it would be in three segments. In the middle of the village, it would be left alone, because we have to account for traffic, we have to account for parking, we have to account for turns. There would be no change in the village, there'd just be minor changes as we approach into the north side. So, it'd be segmented. Then they came back and they said, your plans too diversified. You have, not only do you have complete streets in there, you have drainage systems in there, you have pedestrians in there, and you have traffic and everything else. And they asked if we could kind of break it up. But we went back to them and said, we'd really, night long to break it up, we'd really like to make this contingent and work in concert with the bridge replacement, which is going to be a huge job in the Village Rhinebeck. So, long story short, we have a conference with them scheduled for this coming Monday to go out again. So, I'm not sure whether tonight we're ready to move forward with a plan in terms of committing funds to Time Bond yet, until we can get further commitment from Dutchess County in terms of what their commitment would be and how we could use federal funding to help do this project. Because once they do the project, they will go after federal funding for us to help work on that whole design to create complete streets and a, into the village, into the, into the village. So, I don't know what else I could, Brandy, is there anything you would like to add in regard to that?
No, I think you covered it. I mean, I just think it's a nice opportunity that we've been talking about the corridor and then Dutchess County Transportation Council put out a request for funding, planning studies. So, we'll follow up with them on Monday and I agree with Karen, it'd be extremely helpful for this discussion to have their input on whether or not they have any planning resources available to help support the Village Rhinebeck.
Right. I mean, they've indicated they have resources. Now, the question is, is this one of the plans that we can get accepted? But I'd like to get a feeling from the board, is this something you would like to proceed with, right, in terms of going forward?
I very much think we should proceed with this. There's been, the chairwoman of our, of the tree commission is here and we've had an ongoing discussion about what to do with the, excuse me, I should move forward, what to do with the trees in the central, along that central corridor. There's a lot of old Norway maples, which are not in good shape, they've been pruned badly by Central Hudson, they're leaning over, they're sick. And we may have the opportunity to remove those and replace them. Not with the same kind of tree, but possibly with trees that would be beyond, beyond the right of way. And a question that we have, so we have this opportunity, we may have an opportunity to do that, the question is, how does this, or does this not coordinate with this other larger plan that's, that's ongoing? So, that's my, that's my central question, or do you guys want to talk about that?
So, there's like two things going on. So, there's narrowing Route Nine and adding bike lanes and sorting out drainage and sidewalks and all the rest of it. And then there's this question about taking down and replacing trees along the corridor as well. And if what you just said was that these new trees would not be in the right of way, then I don't think that's part of this conversation. I think you could just do that.
I think it can be separate from this and be, be run independently...
Yeah.
To move forward in terms of replacing all of those Norway maples.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at then an area from South Street to Platte? What are we talking about here?
Well, 2B D, and we can work with that, but I think you're in that vicinity. Brandy, you seem to...
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add is that in terms of drainage management and trees, there are some opportunities to stormwater street trees and, and, you know, address the drainage challenges that are through the corridor while also simultaneously addressing some of the tree issues. Now, I recognize that some of those trees are the ones that are outside of the right of way and I think that truly is a separate issue, but for what may be in the right of way, I think we should see this tree, improve it as a potential opportunity.
But I would like to keep this as two separate tasks.
No, I, I...
So, I'd like to table your task request right now and if, because I want to focus on this task request.
Right, I understand. I don't, I don't have a task request, but I, but I do want to talk about, when we're done with this, talk about how potentially all this folds together.
Right.
So, want to get it done.
So, you know, in the response that Time Bond put out, it really, it would amount to a $35,000 task, an item, task list for us to participate in that, but I'm not going to ask for that this evening. I'm going to wait to see where we are with the county before we...
You think...
Move ahead.
Yeah, because I, I kind of have sticker shock on that.
Yeah.
But I also, a lot of that stuff was covered in our master plan and I'm just wondering if this is sort of thing...
If one more person asks me...
The new master plan people could bless before it gets to us.
Yeah, we, and that's fine, but we would miss the opportunity for this call.
The thing of, the link with the bridge and everything.
I mean, I, I honestly believe that traffic calming coming into the village is something that it was in the original comprehensive plan and it will be in the future comprehensive plan. And so, if we have an opportunity to jump on traffic calming opportunities now with help from Dutchess County and the state and potentially the feds, I think we should jump on that.
But that's the other thing, is, is this a, a long shot? Because New, NY DOT doesn't always do what we want.
We don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
Until we get through the discussion.
And I, I would hope that whatever that they come, I, I mean, I don't know, is it sort of a negotiation between us and NY DOT or is this, you know, we ask them what they want, they come up with a plan and then they just do their plan? Like, how, how does that work?
So, so there are federal standards, if you're taking federal dollars, that you have to work within those, you know, ranges. But that said, part of this corridor study would be the first step in a will be step process, which would be really like to Brad's point, the visioning piece, the community engagement piece, the, you know, where are, where can we pull from existing plan piece to, to form that vision, to say then to DOT, okay, this is what we want and here are kind of the outer bounds of what we don't want. You know, we don't want extra lanes going through, we want calm, slow, multimodal, free infrastructure, that's really our focus. So, the good news is that they are starting to move in that direction, so I think we're getting more of that. And...
Real wonders, right?
Yeah, there's more infrastructure money that we're expecting would be flowing to all communities soon, so doing your planning now positions you well for funds that you have available in the next year or two.
Well, I think that's fair. And, and with the timing of the comprehensive plan, we will create a subcommittee. And then, I mean, if this is just like the first steps and we need to jump on these first steps in order to make sure that we have the appropriate people's attention, then I think that makes a great deal of sense. And then, you know, at least our attention on it can be turned over to a comprehensive plan subcommittee focused on this particular issue. Because I have at least 45 volunteers for all of these things and I haven't even asked for volunteers yet, other than in these meetings. So, I, I mean, I think this sounds great. I also have a little bit of a sticker shock over the $35,000 and so hopefully in our next conversation, we can figure out a little bit more details of how and why and why at that number. But this also seems like a very thorough plan, so that might be also part of it, so...
I think we could ask Brandy to summarize that or come back with a, kind of a breakdown of the cost.
Yeah.
Okay, Brandy? If we go forward, but I, let's, I want to be honest with you, Dutchess County, the transportation, they were very interested in this.
Right.
At the first get-go. They said, yeah, this sounds something like we want, we would like to hear more about it, we would like you to participate in the discussion. So, it's not like we're...
And what, did they provide any more detail on why they thought it was too diversified?
As we're going to find out on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I guess what I'm hearing is permission to proceed, right?
At least on my side, yeah.
All right. I'd like to take a vote, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the discussion, make it official on, you know, official on the record, to proceed with the discussion with the Dutchess County Transportation Committee in terms of seeking funding for a project focused on narrowing and street calming on the interests to the village.
Second.
Second. Can I add one?
Thank you, Lydia.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Pedestrian sidewalk lighting. No, I'm sorry. Pedestrian sidewalk lighting. I don't know how, where we get into this or not, but if all this stuff is being torn up, having better illumination for pedestrians would be really nice to have. The streetlights are designed, the streetlights are designed for automobile traffic. They're not designed to illuminate the sidewalks. And something we could do to encourage walking, especially at this time of year when it gets dark early, is to improve some street lighting so there's some, so pedestrians feel more comfortable walking. So I don't know if that can be part of the proposal, or...
But it is to, the first sentence, "The Village of Rhinebeck is seeking to improve bicycle pedestrian complete streets within the village."
Okay. I hope that includes lights.
So, yeah, I think it does.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Very good.
Yep. Can we do, maybe it's out of order, but part 2B while we're here, the part that I said, or do you want to do it later?
I'd rather do it later. We've got a long agenda to get to, if you don't mind. We can, can we do it on your tree report? All right, next is the, the letter of intent, which we received this afternoon from Time Bond, based on our community development block grant. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the letter of intent and submit the letter of intent, which is due tomorrow to county, for curb removal for ADA accessibility.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any questions?
We've already approved the...
We approved it just to get the letter of intent in, which we said we would do. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 So carried. Very good. Okay. Am I missing anything since we're jumping out? I think we're up to appointment of election inspectors. Martina.
So, as we know, the special election is Tuesday, November 16th, and I've reached out to four individuals...
Martina, could you pull the mic towards you, please?
The special election is November 16th. I've reached out to four individuals who have agreed to be our election inspectors. The first would be Lauren Felvin, who lives at 29 Beach Street, Joyce Meyer, who lives at 12 Crossmore Road, Gina Fox at 9 Manor Road, and Christopher Tabaner at 41 Lorraine Drive. I'm asking the board to approve these inspectors for our special election.
I'd like to make a motion to approve so-named appointing election inspectors for this special election.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. Next, vacation buyout. We're approaching the end of the year, obviously, and at the end of the year, people need to get their vacation times down under the agreed contract limits. So we have five vacation buyouts to approve. They've been reviewed by our treasurer, Karen McLaughlin. So employee, I'm going to make a motion for all, if that's okay with everybody, unless somebody has a question. Employee number nine for 35 hours, employee number 11, 70 hours, employee 22, 200 hours, employee 27, 93 hours, and employee 31, 35 hours. So I have a second.
Second.
Does, does this get employee 22 to the limit as discussed in the contract?
All but one.
Okay.
Which another request will come in for.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. Tree removal applications.
Okay. This last cycle, the tree commission received two applications, which they acted on, for removals. One at 26 Center Street, and again, this is a badly demented Norway maple. The tree commission recommends its removal by a certified arborist of the homeowner's choosing. And the other location is at 110 East Market Street, again, another old Norway maple that's pruned by Central Hudson. And the tree commission does recommend approval by a certified arborist of the homeowner's choosing. So I have a motion to approve those two removals.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion on the trees?
I liked the sketch on the one. It was very cute with the house and the tree.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a sketch on the application.
There's a sketch on one of them with the house and the tree.
Helpful.
It's helpful.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Special request. We have a holiday tree lighting coming up on November 20th. The Village of Rhinebeck is submitting an application for the Village of Rhinebeck holiday tree lighting. By Martina is submitting it. I will read it. And this is for, obviously, the holiday tree lighting. Santa will be riding in a sled from Center Street to the Rhinebeck Bank, at which time our plan is to have a tree that will be illuminated at the Rhinebeck Savings Bank. And Santa will greet the kids. We'll have the trees lit up. And, you know, so we're moving forward. This is really, again, another three-part thing. Chrissy's here, participation with the fire department, who is helping us to organize all of this event in terms of getting Santa to where he needs to be in time when he arrives from the North Pole, and helping us with securing other tree accessories, including the tree to be put up. We have Dave's Tree Service, who has volunteered to help us set the tree. The goal is to get a 20-footer this year.
Wow.
And plant it literally at that spot, not live plant. I mean, it's going, we're going to dig a hole. We have a little platform. We have to secure this tree in a better way to do it.
But not have an actual tree there?
It's not going to be an actual tree, no. When I say plant it, it requires a pole that we put into the ground. We anchor the tree to the pole and do all that. And so...
Prop it up.
The fire department's been great to help with. Chambers worked with us on the lights and securing Dave's Tree Service to put the lights back up into the trees. We have an abundance of lights that we purchased last year. We're hoping Central Hudson did not take too many of them out of the trees when they did their pruning this year, and we'll be able to work and get that done. But the event is November 20th. Setup time is at 4:45. Event time is at 5 o'clock in Center Street to Rhinebeck Savings Bank. The bank parking lot will be closed all day because there will be vendors that the Rotary is also participating in. There'll be vendors in the bank parking lot for the event. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Village of Rhinebeck holiday tree lighting.
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. Next, Foster's tree lighting. Excuse me, Foster's...
Gary.
Says what?
Funding.
Oh, the funding. I'm sorry, yes. As part of the holiday tree lighting, I said we have plenty of lights, but we do need to purchase a tree, and we do need to secure a stand for it. We're estimating that cost at $250. We will be using our labor to help put the tree along with the, to prepare the site for the tree. Dave's Tree Service will help us erect the tree, so there's no cost for that. So I'm budgeting $250. I'd like to have the board approval for that expense for the holiday tree lighting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So good. Now, Foster's tree lighting. Foster's Coach House has submitted an application for their tree lighting ceremony, which would be held on its annual tree lighting. It'll be held on their outdoor patio. No parking spaces will be impacted in terms of the event. The event date is November 24th, and setup time is at 5:00. Event starts at 6:00. Estimated tear-down is at 7:45. Estimated attendance will be approximately 100 people. I'd like to make a motion to accept Foster's Coach House tree lighting event on their outdoor patio.
Second.
Any questions?
They have here the use of loudspeakers. Apologies, I don't remember this event. Is it, like, what are we talking about with loudspeakers?
They have the same things compared to the noise.
Okay.
Within, you know, if we did it, same as the rules we had before.
Yep.
It can't be heard outside of their property line by greater than such amount.
Okay.
And they're pretty good about it.
Sure.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So carried. Sinterklaas peddler's permits. These have all been approved by Sinterklaas for the event on December 4th. Sinterklaas were the only one that would be allowed to approve the events with our approval to go inside with it. And the first one is for the Rhinebeck Rhinebach Exchange Program by Mark Fleischauer, the president. It's a non-for-profit music for youth, and their goal is to sell holiday items like ornaments, et cetera, at the event. What they don't have, Martina, is where they are doing this.
They will reach out to...
Yeah, so I don't have a location, which has to be approved by the event organizers as well. So can we approve this? Is there any question? I'd like to make, let's make a motion to approve and then another question. I'd like to make a motion to approve. I have a second for Rhinebeck Rhinebach Exchange.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. All right. I would like to approve it based on an agreed-to location.
Pending.
Right. Agreed-to pending location, because I think that's important.
Gene would approve the location.
Pardon?
Gene would approve the location number eight.
Right.
And that would be in conjunction with public safety and everything else that would...
Absolutely. Yeah, because we don't want to block sidewalks. We don't want to block certain places. So it's, all right. All in favor of approving this pending an approved location by Sinterklaas and our fire and police community, say aye.
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 Aye. So carried. One more. This is from, again, Foster's Coach House, and this is to Foster's Coach House Tavern to set up a, to set up their truck, I believe, right? Their food truck, which would be in the, yes, this is for their food truck, which they did two years ago, in the back parking lot of Foster's. So not the one on the corner, the second one down on West Market Street.
This is during Sinterklaas, or this is...
During Sinterklaas, the day. This is for Sinterklaas. It's been approved by the event organizer for them to stay on their property and provide food for people who want it.
Is my staying inside their property, is that sort of skirting the nonprofit peddler situation?
Not really. No, this is not a non-for-profit.
No, it's not.
But they, they have approved it in terms of providing...
Just so you all know what I'm talking about, traditionally, Sinterklaas only approves nonprofits as part of their peddlers? So that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, so this one is outside of the non-for-profits that they put forward.
Is, and has Foster's only done this in one previous year, or is this something that they've always done?
I only remember it two years ago. I don't remember it in previous years.
I don't want to step on tradition, but at the same time...
It did go fine. It went well.
It went fine?
Is it in their parking lot?
And it's in their parking lot, right? It's on private land. I mean, that's...
Yeah, that makes all the difference.
Yeah.
But it is not considered non-for-profit.
Right.
I think the fact that they're doing it in their parking lot makes...
Well, it helps when you own all the parking lots.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 No comment.
No, no comment.
Okay.
I did not second that. I don't know who did.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Gary, who seconded that one?
I, ma'am.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 10:12:21, 10:26:21, and 11:04:21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brent. Questions?
I haven't read them.
I haven't read them either.
All right. So that's not enough. So we're going to abstain. We're going to, we're going to table this to the next meeting, Martina? All right, to give the board plenty of time to review.
Thanks, Martina, sorry.
Please review. Brent did. So please take time to read the minutes. Okay. Treasurers' report.
I got it. Are we actually done?
Okay, the treasurer's report is balances are for the period ending October 31st. The tax collector's account ended the month with $984,652.75. The general fund ended the month with $218,898.6. The water fund ended the month with $260,863.41. And the sewer fund ended the month with $600,925.3. Vouchers presented for payment this month, in the general fund, totaled $92,218.97. In the water fund, $34,218.40. In the sewer fund, $43,389.99. A police grant purchase, or police purchase from a grant for a new computer, $15,006,2117. A forestry grant purchase for tree planting of $1,000, and escrow bill for $437.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as read.
Just the vouchers, right?
The vouchers, yes.
Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Lydia. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the operating statement is provided with the revenue expenditures through November 9. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments, as signed off by trustee Nunaker, are presented for authorization.
I'd like to approve the adjustments to water and wastewater as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anything else, Karen?
I do have something else. Budget amendments. I have a few budget amendments, and they're pretty much follow-up. Follow-up the insurance recovery revenue to allocate the insurance payment to the equipment expense for the street purchases of $226,237. The chips, to increase chips for the actual expense and reimbursement by New York State of $39,850. And then just to allocate for the vehicle, for the fire vehicle, from principal to interest of $344.
Chrissy, you're next. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Karen.
Okay, the water system upgrade, which, the water system upgrade, which is what we're naming the new project, the new WEA project. So I request a resolution to create a new fund and transfer the balance of $46,172.4, as well as change the name on the bank account from Water Main Replacement Project to Water System Upgrade effective November 10. It's just legally, I have to have the board authorize creating the new fund, even though it's the same bank account authorizing the transfer of that remaining balance to the new fund.
What's the balance again? Forty-six? Thank you. I have a...
Second.
I'm going to make the first. I'd make a motion to approve.
No, I thought she made a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, she can't make a motion.
Yeah. So I made a motion, Brent seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, upgrade water meter reader and software. I am also requesting a resolution to upgrade the meter reader to the new Neptune R900 belt clip trans receiver.
God, that's something out of a sci-fi novel.
For $3,333.20. And upgrade the software to Neptune 360 for an annual subscription fee of $2,780. If purchased prior to December 31st with a three-year commitment, the setup fee of $4,500 is waived. This, we've been, we've been working on doing this for several years. The meter reader is very old. The software is not updated. So it's just kind of a bonus to have the setup fee waived, but we do need to, to update this. Also, to contract with Vipo cross connects for backflow and grease trap maintenance. This cost is passed on to the client, and we'll just need to either purchase a tablet or this will be done as a mobile app for the water and wastewater departments.
Didn't you say that we can actually do work orders through this now, too?
I'm sorry?
We can do work orders through this now, too?
We can do work orders through this, but I'm also in the process of looking at new water and sewer billing software.
Oh, that was, okay.
And I had, we had, Gary and I sat in and looked at a company. But I wanted to wait till we did the water rate study, till we look at our financial software as a package and maybe get something that's integrated into the general ledger. So I wasn't quite ready to just make that commitment to change the whole billing software. But we can certainly just do this piece of it and upgrade the meter reader and the equipment that the guys need to go on.
And we budgeted for this, too.
And this system works with what you're hoping to upgrade everything else to?
Right. Correct.
Great.
I mean, there'll be an interface with whatever software.
We'll figure out a way to have one hand talk to the other.
Right, yes, yes.
Could you do that hand motion again?
You know, technology, right?
That one was water.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new Neptune, whatever, whatever, water meter and upgrading the software and the additional software for the app for wastewater. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, my only question is, how many water meters are left yet to be changed? We've been working on this forever.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I really don't know.
I mean, we always had a goal of doing so many a month, and I don't...
I know. We definitely do a bunch.
It'd be nice to know where we are with that as well, because it makes, it is a time-saving for everybody.
Vanessa.
All right. Any other discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. All right.
Okay, one more.
One more?
The gardens remaining funds. The bond for the Esther Road expansion has been paid in full, and I request a resolution to return the remaining funds of $33,174.22 and close the bank account for the gardens.
Return the funds to them?
To them, yes.
That's too bad.
Yeah, it is.
It's in their contract.
Can we ask them? I make a motion to return the funds from the garden project back to, back to the contractor.
Second.
In discussion?
20 years. 20 years.
Yeah.
Finally got paid off.
And it's really done? It's like fully done?
But the developers were paying the last 10 years. We just passed it through to them, so.
Got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, Department of Works, we have a guest tonight, EMS captain Chrissy Amy, who would like to give. Who, so I'm going to ask the board for permission to move fire up front.
Sure.
If that's okay. So we also, we have a report. I don't know if Chrissy, you're going to read the report, or do you want me to do that, or do you want to?
You can do that, and then I'll do the.
All right, very good. All right. So the fire department report, there was a total of 98 fire EMS calls in the month of October. And they continue to keep going with their members. They had three members complete the New York State Fire Police Corps. Two members have completed the New York State Firefighter II class, held at Dutch County Training Center. And recently, they participated with a truck on the final day of the burn, which is an interesting event to participate in. And they have two members enrolled in the New York State EMT class as members. And nominations have taken place for November 1st for the office positions for the 2022 year, with elections to be held on December 6th. And the Rhinebeck Fire Department, operating the year that goes from November 1st to October 31st, has ended. They currently have 49 active firefighters and EMTs going into the 2021, 2022 year. Many, many kudos to all you guys for, and gals, sorry, who are working hard every day. And, you know, I see the calls, the number of calls you guys get banged out for on a daily basis sometimes is astronomical. And, and literally, one right after the other. So, great job.
All right. So my purpose tonight is kind to bring the board up to date on where we stand with the purchase of the new ambulance. So as you know, this has been a pretty lengthy project that started back in June. And I'm happy to say that the ambulance has been ordered. We have signed contracts with Horton to go move forward with the purchase of the ambulance. And thanks to a very generous donation by the Frost Foundation, at this point of $100,000 towards the purchase of the new ambulance. And in addition to the Rhinebeck Interact Club and the Frost Foundation, through some fundraising events that they're going to be doing for us. So our members don't have to do all the fundraising, as we've always done for the purchase of an ambulance. So it kind of takes that burden off of us. So with their help, the remaining balance will be covered. So the entire cost of the new ambulance of $232,477 is coming to our taxpayers and village at no cost. So that's pretty exciting for that, yeah. Also, at this time, we are going to be requesting the board to approve the purchase of a new power load and power cot stretcher. We had contemplated going back and forth of whether or not we could take the old one out of the old ambulance and put it in the new one, and it was just way too complicated to, to make that happen. So we are in the market to purchase a brand-new power load and power cot at the cost of $45,072, or no, $45,7297, plus a $2,250 install fee. So the total would be $47,322.97. And that would be just something that comes out of the fire department's capital reserve, as you talked to Karen. The reason that we are actually trying to propose this and get this approved so early in this process is Stryker has informed us that as of the first of the year, there will be a 7% to 10% increase on all of their products. So we're looking to get a jump on it. The great thing is, is that we can delay delivery up to seven months. So they're basically kind of saying, you know what, well, we'll hold it for you. And when it comes time that you guys need it for the install, we can get it to you. So it's not something that, you know, we have to keep here and hold on to until the ambulance is obviously built and ready for it. So for that. And so that would be my first request. And then my second request is to present to the board to have you guys sell back the old ambulance for a dollar to Rhinebeck Fire Department Incorporated, which is the same amount in which we sold it to you for. So this unit can be, one or two things can happen. We're looking to trade in the entire unit, including the power load, so that price could come off the top of the fee of the ambulance as a whole. Or trade in just the ambulance and take the power load out. We kind of got a little bit of some mixed reviews on how it could be best financially beneficial to us, whether or not we sell it as a whole package, or whether or not we divide them and kind to sell them outright. So if we traded in, obviously, that cost would go against the purchase. If we trade in just the box of the ambulance and sell out the power load, then we would then take the money that we got back from the sale and put that back into the fire department's capital reserve. Does that make sense? That's kind of would be our plan. With the purchase also of the ambulance, and, you know, it's up to you, there is the option to break down that $45,000 total into three consecutive year payments at no interest, with a dollar buyout at the end of the three years. So if you, I don't know what they would want to do. So buy it all out at 45, or split it into three payments with a dollar at the end for that. So I think that is all of my notes. Oh, and then, just Gary, in terms of all the legal legality things that we spoke about, I know that our attorney has tried to reach out to Rich Olson several times, hasn't gotten any response. So we can kind of execute that and so we can get all things put up
Yeah.
to where we need to be. But that is my proposals at this time.
So do we need, do we need to wait on legal in order to?
I'm sorry.
Yes, so, yeah, so two things. First, like, I'm going to interrupt. So let's, let's first approve the power stretcher.
Okay.
Right, or let's vote on the power stretcher. Karen, you're in favor of taking it out of capital reserve, right?
Yes, they have, they have enough in there. My only question is, is, so is it going to, are you going to pay for it and it's not going to be available for the months? Or, I'm just asking because if you're going to purchase it and it's not going to be available, then maybe the three payments might be the way to go. But if you're going to purchase it and get it right when you purchase.
No, they're just willing, because our ambulance isn't going to be ready for five to seven months. So they're willing to just kind of hold it. The point is, is to make the purchase prior to the first of the year.
Okay.
Because if we wait to make the purchase when the ambulance is ready for it, it's a 7% to 10%, you know, percent price increase.
They're good.
Yeah, so we're just looking to purchase it before the price increase.
But purchase for the full amount, not the three separate payments.
That's up to you, however you financially think it's going to be.
But you're saying either way, they'll hold it.
Either way, yeah.
So it doesn't matter to them.
It's just how we sign on the dotted line, how you want to pay.
If we pay like 30% now and pay the balance when they deliver.
Nope, it's, it's either the whole amount or three equal consecutive payments. It's basically taking that 45, dividing into three, and a dollar at the end.
I mean, if they have the money in their capital reserve account, we might as well, we might as well just.
They do have the money.
Yeah, then let's just.
Get the discount.
Get the discount and move on.
Well, we get the discount either way.
We get the discount anyway.
Right, get the discount and just get it done.
It's not worth the paperwork.
All right, listen, I make a motion to purchase the power stretcher for the $45,000 plus the $2,450 for the $47,322.97.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so now let's talk about the sellback of the ambulance. Because that still comes under discussion that we need to have with legal. So I would like to table that discussion until we understand how we need to operate with equipment.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I ask you a question about that? Have we done it that way in the past?
Always.
So it's been done before? Okay.
Have anything about state procurement laws changed in the meantime? Yeah, I got, right, I, yeah.
Above my degree.
Yeah, I think this is where the lawyers can be helpful.
Yeah, and that's why I'm going forward as a, you know, if you have something established, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought this should just sell it back for a dollar versus the rules of what we've been told of putting it out on surplus. We could sell it to anybody, but it has to go out.
Right.
On surplus.
I don't know what those rules are.
Right.
And I would really like to make sure we understand the rules before we make a comment.
And I just, you know, I actually just got an email from Pisky this morning that said he's, he's tried multiple times.
Okay, and we, we'll follow up and try to do that.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Chrissy.
All right, I'm going to jump back up to the police report. Police report for the month of October, total number of incidents in the town was 19. Total number of incidents in the village, 120. Total number of tickets in the town was zero. Total number of tickets in the village, 34. Total number of arrests were one. Total number of accidents were 11.
Wow.
So, yes. They've done extra coverage for traffic control, for brush pickup. We'll see, we'll be doing it again, I think, soon, on, on East Market Street. The Fall Full Age Half Marathon, and the police services were billed, so that is no cost to us. The Halloween Parade, which is kind of a wonderful event if anybody was here. We saw, I saw you, yes, pictures, and, and then Halloween Night, which is, from what I hear, there was a great turnout.
Yeah, huge.
Huge.
I gave away 1,500 pieces of candy. I call it the village tax.
And, you know, if anybody wants out on the cloud, it's a breakdown of the incidents and a breakdown of the tickets. And so those reports are available. Building, planning, and zoning.
So I have a few things to report on, and one thing that I'd like to discuss. To begin with, the building, planning, and zoning office has taken in $5,196 in October. We are now above 200 building permits issued for the year, when in a normal year, we have around 100. So building, planning, and zoning is literally at 200%, or at 100%, 200%? I'm getting this math wrong. Double its normal capacity. And we are in the process of working on some staffing plans to, to manage that. Due to a request made by a village resident, I am working with our building inspector on examining certain building fees for our low-income elderly population and some thresholds we can place around that and what kind of schedule we would produce. It is never a good idea to change the building fee schedule in the middle of a fiscal year. So anything we do in this current fiscal year, we're going to end up probably doing ad hoc at the end of every month, in the same way that Brant does it with water and wastewater. But my plan is to put into place, starting in the new fiscal year, a new building fee schedule that would take into account elder, low-income elderly folks. We had a really successful public comment session on November 4th concerning the Father Brogan Center and the plan put forward by the developers and neighbors' comments and villagers' comments. I have continued, and all of us, many of us have continued to receive email comments. We're trying to collate all of them and make sure they're in the folder that's online. So all of you can see all of these comments. And so the next step, and I just wanted to have a quick discussion about this with the five of us, is one, we could sit down and have a conversation with the planning board, and that would be a public conversation, because it would be all five of us, plus five of us, and, and figure out what it is that we want to do. There were a lot of comments that I would like to classify as planning board-style comments, design questions, density questions, this, that, and the other. But what I think is particularly relevant to our attention, I mean, obviously, I'm personally very interested in those questions. But in our role here, we need to think about questions like, you know, multifamily housing, low-income housing, reuse of existing structures, adaptive reuse of existing structures in the village, our historic preservation district, all of these kinds of questions. And so the question that I have for you all, and I think it's worth a quick conversation, is do we want to have that conversation with the planning board? Or do we want to punt that conversation to the comprehensive planning committee? Which is really their job, but at the same time, we have a proposal by a current developer sitting in front of us. And the comprehensive planning committee, although I expect it to be up and running in 2022, is not yet up and running. And one of the village residents made a very good point last week is that the building is now finally back on tax rolls, and we want to make sure it stays there in some form or another. So thoughts?
I think we need to do both. I mean, I think that, and I wonder if that was sort of like a, a discussion that was not really from the public, might have had a chilling effect on what the developer wants to do. So if the developer might narrow the scope of what they want to do, we should find out where, what their, what applicant wants to bring forward. If it's even, if now do they want to request a demolition permit, or?
I mean, I don't know.
I have a scope issue. Like, I don't want to keep talking 13 units if that's not ultimately what they're going to bring forward. But I think we should talk to the planning board as soon as we can. And there's a provision in the code that says that we can punt things to the planning board based upon their expertise, like you said, with.
Right.
With spatial things and aesthetics and planning and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to have the comprehensive plan think about things like adaptive reuse and, you know, density of housing in existing buildings and things like that.
But this project, you know, we don't, we're not asking, we don't have a moratorium.
We do not.
Yeah.
We do not have a moratorium.
And I don't know, I don't even want to explore that if we don't have to, so.
So what is it, what is a realistic timeline here?
For what?
For either, A, you know, punting it to a committee, or B, taking it down a path that says legislation and planning get together. Because I also think we need to look at inventory in terms of what's on the market, what's coming on the market, et cetera. I think those numbers are important to have.
Right.
And it's hard to make an assessment without, in my opinion, it's hard to make an assessment without that.
Right.
You know, because we do know we need certain things. We need senior housing, we need low-income housing, and we know there's ADA housing coming on available. We're getting head, approved senior-level housing coming available, and whatever else is out.
Yeah, there's a lot happening in the village and the town that focuses on this issue, and it's better to, I believe, I, I agree. I think it's better to have these kinds of conversations inside the overall context of what's happening. You know, and I think it also became clear last week that, you know, they're not particularly interested in actual elder and actual affordable. They're just, at the moment, their current proposal is market rate.
55 and up, whatever.
55 and over apartments.
So I think we, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking project-specific and then the big, the bigger picture.
Right, and we can do kind of both at the same time? Like, we think about the project-specific and the comprehensive plan thinks about the bigger picture?
My personal opinion, I don't want to get into design.
I, no, and I, no, that's not our job, yeah.
That's not appropriate.
And that's not our job.
I want to get into, do we need this? And is it something that we think that is a attribute to the village? As well as a necess, as a need for the village? And then whatever legislation, either way.
Right, that would, that would warrant, you know, a zoning.
Right, if it warrants a zoning change.
And that's why I asked, what is a timeline? Is the, I mean, we don't have a moratorium, but
We do not have a moratorium.
I don't know what the timeline is when you have a project in front of you that's.
It's all up to the applicant.
I mean, it's all up to the applicant, right. I mean, like, right now, what they proposed is not legal. And so, you know, the timeline is.
Whatever we give them.
Whatever we give them, to be perfectly blunt.
Tomorrow, if they go for a demolition permit and they get it, then there's nothing for us to do at all. So that's why.
Right.
I'm wondering if there's, we need to re-scope it.
But I mean, I think that also begs the question from us is, you know, there were a lot of complaints about that building's not technically historic. And then I got a very funny email from a resident saying, yeah, it's not historic according to our historic code, I mean, our historic district, but, you know, nobody who's currently living remembers the village without that building. And so, you know, it does add to the diversity of the infrastructure of, of the village. If it was torn down, it would be replaced with, you know, brand-new housing that looks historic. But eventually, at what point do we become a colonial Williamsburg versus like an actual living, breathing village? Which I thought was an interesting comment, right? But I mean, like, so, so the question that I think that we need to answer is, is this a building that we are willing to have be more than two families?
Right, so dead, dead ago.
That's what I said, do we have a need for that?
Right, and do we have a need for that?
Do we have a need for that? Do we have a need for that?
But the procedural demolition question is actually the CEO and the planning, and he can refer to the planning board.
Yeah, 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 so if they want to tear down the building, they can just do that tomorrow.
I would love to know whether the guy, whether the folks want to do it or...
They do not want to do that. It would cost, from what I understand, it would cost at least half a million to tear it down, and that does not include asbestos remediation. And asbestos remediation would add a significant six figures on top of that. And from an environmental perspective, tearing a building down like that is a complete and total waste of resources. So there's lots of reasons why adaptive reuse is used in sort of these older, for these older buildings.
Yeah, this is, I didn't know this.
Yeah, so, I mean, so I think what I'm hearing is a conversation with the planning board would be useful.
Yes, yes.
And punt the overall issue, the big-picture issue to the Comprehensive Plan.
I'd like to get some data.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're not saying that the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee on, you know, housing...
Housing, right.
Is, is going to be able to get that data and present, like, an overall proposal for our direction, our vision for what we want to do?
I mean, even if we move ahead and say, let's form a committee, it can be still a committee that moves ahead and we give them a 60-day window to say, come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
It, whether it's part of the comprehensive, that data is still useful for the Comprehensive Plan.
Totally.
If we do it now.
Okay.
And having a realistic look at data and having a group of smart, intelligent people...
Yeah.
Analyze this.
Really think about this, yeah.
And tell the developer, sorry, we got, you're going to have to wait till we do this.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I disagree with that.
You don't? Because...
Yeah, I, I think we need to work on two tracks. It's, affordable housing question is so difficult, I mean, you know, Westchester County's in federal court over this, I mean, it's, it's something that's going to take a long time to find a solution for, or to find some fact-finding and to find some conclusions for it. I don't think it can be done, the vehicle is through this project. I think that it's like the separate question kind of thing. So, I mean, I agree with you, we should get started right away, but I don't think that they should be linked.
Yeah, I think what Brian is saying is that this is not, if we peel back the layers here, this is not about creating affordable housing, and this is not especially about creating long-term senior housing. This is really creation of a market rate set of apartments in that spot, and I think it's...
In the question of its compatibility with...
So the question is, how do you establish that? How do you establish that without having some data to say what is needed?
Well, no, my, my question is, well, I'm going to ask the question, is I'm not sure what is needed, the question is, is do we want that use in that place? Is really, you know, a question that I want answered.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
It's not a question of whether they need, it's whether that's the...
Okay, I agree with that.
Whether a sort of, an apartment building is the right use for that site.
It's really like a use, it's a use variance situation, except that, you know, I'd love to have a firewall between zoning and us, but this actually belongs here for a moment, and we need to sort it out, maybe come up with a scope of questions and then give it back to the planning board as soon as we can. But we need to kind of say, okay, we've got, please explore option A, option B, option C, or, you know what I'm saying?
And, yeah, and I'm saying, why can't we use, get a subcommittee together to help us do that, and have, and make that happen, rather than us trying to peel that apart?
Well, mildly concerned...
I think we should do it with the planning board. I think we can sort out a lot if we meet with the planning board on this.
I, again, there's that little wall. What the legislation there, they, they enforce.
Yeah, but we need...
Yeah, but they're the...
We need help, yeah.
Yeah, and they're the experts of that, so let's...
I mean, they're the, they're the experts that we currently...
They could be part of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, well, but they're the experts that we currently have on it, and I can guarantee you, this housing committee isn't going to be up and running until January.
Yeah, but why can't, I, I say, we can form a committee now, they could be part of that committee.
I think, the 10 of us can get together legally, and let's just...
Whatever, okay, whatever, I'm not going to argue what, I think we need to move, I think we need to get data, I think we, before we make a decision, and however we do that...
All right, I'll send out an email asking for, you know, timing and availability for the 10 of us to get together for a meeting.
Hopefully in December.
Yeah, early December, probably, right after Thanksgiving. I know, yeah, I'm a disaster.
Not super early in December.
That's super late.
No, I actually, I don't want to miss this one.
Okay, so, that leads us into a conversation about the Comprehensive Plan, just really quickly, this is not a conversation, sorry, an update on that. As I mentioned before, you know, I've gotten so many emails, I've got so many people interested in this, that I am inundated, and I am the only one managing this, so I am sorry if I have not responded to emails, if you have expressed interest. But I've gotten so much interest that I've, I now need to create a process around managing the interest. So, I've gone back to the drawing board a little bit, and I've started working with a colleague of mine who, who's an expert in facilitation of, you know, brainstorming and ideation and all of the rest of it, because it turns out that a full, you know, 10th of the village would like to participate in this process. And we haven't even sent out a full call over Facebook or email or anything. So, please, everybody, just stay tuned. As I mentioned before, this is going to take a minute for me to set up, it's going to take a minute for me to, you know, even ask for applications, and that's what we're going to have to kind of end up doing. So, as much as I want to start having people think about these things immediately, it's going to take a minute to do this. So, you know, as I mentioned in the email to all of you, if you know of a high school or a college student who might be willing to help me with some of the administrative load of this, I'd be happy to give them volunteer or course credit.
Lydia, what do you think about the idea of getting actually, like, an intern ongoing for the Comprehensive Plan Committee?
I would love an intern ongoing for the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I did not think it was, I mean, I'm delighted that there's so much interest in it, and I think it's super important for the future of the village that there's so much interest in it. But I, I can't do it by myself. Yeah, I mean, if, I could talk to Marist or Vassar or Bard or someone, but I, yeah, if, if anyone knows about, you know, the possibility for administrative help...
Brandy, if you know of there are good planning students?
Yeah, planning students.
Yeah, right. Some land use program nearby or...
Yeah, let me put my thinking cap on, there are plenty of institutions, so if our breakfast students are probably looking for it.
Yeah, great, thank you. And so, once, once, once I have a process around this figured out, I swear to you, all of you will know what that process is, I just need to take a minute to figure out what the process is. Because I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to engage in the way that they want to engage. And that is the update from Building Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Highway.
Okay. Couple of things from Highway. The crews have been out clearing, clearing brush and debris, they did some safety training, they helped Dave's Tree Service take down a large tree on Oak Street, they've been out trimming roadside trees and such to make sure that there are appropriate sightlines, they've been out blacktopping, our contractor has finally shown up to, to do the blacktopping that we've been requesting all, all summer, so that should be underway. They've also helped with the opening, closing of the valves at Asher Dam, installed the library book drop and the admissible parking lot, all those, all those other good things. The two trucks that were totaled in the fire have been removed and the areas cleaned up. They've also delivered a few loads of mulch. I just want to remind people that, right now, brush pickup is ongoing between now and December 1st. And in order to make this process more, more efficient, we need to separate your leaves from your other yard debris. And the reason why is, we have a vacuum truck, the vacuum truck is great for picking up leaves, but if it picks up something else, it breaks. So we ask people to separate out the leaves and the other, if they have limbs, twigs, other stuff, larger, larger elements, that shouldn't be any longer than four feet long. They can separate those out, the leaf truck will come and pick up the leaves, the back hose and the dump trucks will come and pick up the heavier stuff, and that will be ongoing through December 1st. So, thank you, please, please adhere to those rules and it'll all go quite, quite smoothly. I just wanted to also update the board, way back in May and June, the DEC came through, they were surveying brownfields and their impact on drinking water. And, oh no, the good news is that we see, so they put, they put a couple of small wells into the Lions Park to check out, that's an old brownfield, to check out if, if there's any action. And, long story short, no action is necessary, everything is okay.
Really?
Great.
Yeah, there's not, yeah. Yeah, I, it's, it's, there's a, there's a fair amount, it's pretty complicated, but in my conversations with, with the folks at New York State, I mean, the two reasons why is that there's stuff, we don't have to worry about stuff being out of spec, and the other one is that, that nobody draws their drinking water within a quarter mile of that, that location. So basically, the, the DEC has been going through the entire state, doing the sampling and water quality. We're among the last, because they knew that this was not, actually not a drinking, a drinking water source. So the wells are there, I did not get a, a date when they're going to be removed, I'm trying to find that out, but as far as we know, we're clear, we have no further actions that we need to take.
Oh, this is fantastic.
So that's, that's, I just wanted to share that news. And Martin, I'll drop this report with you. And that's it for Highway.
Thank you. Water Department.
Okay, I covered a couple of things. We did complete all our blacktop patches, we finally found someone to do it. I'll give you an update on Grassmere, we're, we're starting up the discussion again, we've got some more detailed drawings, there's some issues that need to be worked on that Brandy and I and Brian and Alex are working on, and Brandy's going to write a summary letter to them, and we'll rekindle the water agreement, which we had negotiated to fruition pretty much before, so, they have new council, but I told them I don't have new councils, so let's not reinvent the wheel, so we'll see how that goes. I'm still waiting on the, to hear back from Bottini on the date for the tank swap, I'm sorry, they, they must be super busy right now, but we'll get that done before it freezes up.
Waste Water.
Waste Water, we covered the utility truck, the sledge bid, the Veolia, Rough Brothers is pretty much done with the greenhouse, it looks great. I think the only thing left, Brandy, the doors, right, the custom doors aren't completed yet?
They're not in yet, they won't be in until, I think she said the first week of December. Yeah.
Okay. Great, and it looks really good.
Do we know if the contractor has paved that area in the parking lot yet? Last time I was there, which had been a week or two.
I forgot, I was thinking about that.
So we paid him in advance to do that.
I was thinking about that today, I was going to check on that, and then I forgot.
I'm worried about the plant's closing.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Yeah, I'll look into that again. That's about it.
Before I ask you, do you have a battery purchase?
Oh, thank you. So, we have a maintenance agreement with HO Penn for the generator, it's a maintenance, you know, they, it's part of their general maintenance report, they determined that the batteries were, needed to be replaced. So this is sort of an FYI, because I think this is, it's a $1,268 item, and, you know, under our new procurement code, Brian, Brian, Alex, and, and between him and me and you, we have the authority to, to make this purchase, but I just wanted to give you an FYI that we're going to accept this quote from HO Penn to, to replace the new battery. So we're already under contract with, with them, so, that's pretty much it. I mean, I could ask for a resolution if you want to.
What's the total cost of the contract?
What's that?
What is the cost of the contract?
The monthly contract, I don't know.
Is it, do we have to, the only reason I'm getting back is because we recently, you know, went through a program in terms of making sure all of our contracts are prevailing wage and all the appropriate paperwork is filed.
Oh yeah, I'm sure that this, this has been around for a while.
I know, but...
Yeah.
Even though it's been around for a while, doesn't mean it was, it's...
Yeah, I, I'm sure it is, because it's, it's a big output, but...
I, I think we need to verify that, and then I'm...
We can go on, there's a lot of situations like that. But, okay.
And then I'm okay, I'm okay, with anybody else have any question about it?
If it's under the procurement limit, go for it.
So, you want me to get a resolution, or?
Does anybody have any question about it? I mean, this...
Don't we have for public works, don't we have like a...
It's like $3,000, isn't it?
Yeah, $3,500 or something. Did you guys, did you have a comment, Karen?
No, I think you all said...
I think the prevailing wage thing, though, is something that...
Yeah, that we have to, that's kind of a...
Well, we have, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it provided it meets the...
Yeah, okay.
F criteria for prevailing wage under the contract.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vanessa?
Okay, so, I have some updates on the climate environment front. I want to thank the board again for supporting the Proposition 2 on the November 2nd ballot, which New Yorkers passed, so we now have, now have the right to clean air, clean water, and healthy environment. So congratulations to us. I want to let you know that...
Yay!
The Climate Smart Task Force is reaching out to meet with some more interested high schoolers and with the superintendent of the Redbeck Schools to talk about possible more collaboration with the Climate Smart Task Force. We, the big news, my headline, is we got our compost feasibility study delivered from our partners at the RIT Pollution Prevention Institute, and it is in the cloud for everyone to check out. This really represents a culmination of months and months of work, where we were, we were meeting with our partners at P2I every other week. And there's a lot of information, it's very information-rich report, and the plan is for us to come back at you on the board with a proposal for a pilot to attempt some composting for villagers. So, I would like to be able to put that together with some real numbers and details for next month, for the December meeting. But please have a look at the compost feasibility study, because compost is making dirt, you would think it would be simple, but it's actually extremely complex. It really is, on many different levels. I also want to thank Chrissy and Karen, who sat in for training with our Clean Energy Communities point person, Eleanor Peck, and they got a training on something called the EPA Portfolio Management Tool. And this basically is going to enable us to report out publicly on our utilities and our energy consumption for all of our municipal buildings. So we're all set up in this new system, it's a web tool that can then output spreadsheets and graphs and other things that Chrissy and Karen need anyways, and it was just a matter of, of getting set up. So, thanks for moving to a new system, here's to moving to a new system, and all the kinks and quirks of the new system. Right. Yeah, and also on the energy front, Ken McLaughlin took a, an approved training for energy code enforcement, which also gets us points for our Climate Smart Communities program, as well as Clean Energy Communities. For all the members of the public who've been asking me about electric lawn equipment, yes, I hear you and I feel you. And the good news is that the, the market is really advancing with some of these options. I'm, I've been having other, thank you to Lydia for setting me up for the conversation with a gentleman who runs an arboretum and uses all electric lawn equipment. I did a little bit more research, and I found that there's a New York State Senator Harkam who is proposing a bill at the state level, Bill S. 7462, which will set targets for transitioning to electric lawn equipment. So this is an issue I'm continuing to work on, and, and I hope that as the Highway Department or any other departments that have lawn equipment bring purchases forward, that we consider the latest electric equipment for our own municipal purchases, and I encourage folks in the public to do the same. Turns out, especially, especially leaf blowers are incredibly polluting, not just in terms of the, their carbon footprint, but also in terms of pollutants that they're kicking up into the air and, and contributing to poor air quality. So that's an, an ongoing topic. And, oh, one last piece of good news... And, oh, one last piece of good news. We finally got the SIM card that we will need for our MERRIS students' collaboration. These students are studying the flooding along the Landsman Kill. And they have inserted a sensor into the Landsman Kill to study precipitation, water level, and flow. And they need a SIM card with a data machine-to-machine plan, I learned, to actually be able to upload that data to the cloud. So they've got the device, they picked it up today, and they're going to be testing it out and I'll come with it works. And that's it.
Perfect. I could have used the rain bucket data this summer a lot.
I know.
It would have been useful to have to gauge what we were doing. Yeah. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Trees.
Okay. The Tree Commission has been quite busy in the last month. Over this last weekend, the commission planted nineteen, twenty, twenty trees at various locations around the village. It's all done with volunteer labor assisted by the Highway Department, which digs the holes and delivers the mulch for us. But other than that, you probably saw if you were driving around the village this weekend, there were a bunch of us in those nice fluorescent, or fluorescent yellow t-shirts. And we were working to put in trees. And this is part of a long-term commitment. The Tree Commission does twice yearly plantings. This is one in the spring, one in the fall. And it was a really beautiful, successful day. I'll have a full roster of everybody who was there. I will read the names. It was a really terrific day. The next thing I want to remind folks is that we, the Tree Commission, won a $1,000 grant to install holly trees down at Crystal Lake, which we've done. We've installed a tree down there. As part of the request from the grantors, they wanted us to have some level of celebration and recognition of the trees and the people who helped put them here in the village. So on Saturday, November 20th, at 9:30, down by the new holly tree, we were going to have a little celebration to which everybody is, everyone is invited. It'll be a chance for us to thank all the volunteers who have worked over the years at the Tree Commission, a chance to thank the Frost Foundation, who gave us some money to help put together a report, which is being used, a computer program that's being used to track our trees. So I hope everybody has a chance to come down. We won't take long, about 9:30. This is something that, I think that the grantors really felt like they wanted to increase the visibility of these kinds of projects around because very quietly, over the years, I would say the commission has planted over 400, maybe now 450 trees. And if you think about what that does for the landscape of the village, that's an incredible, an incredible commitment and an incredible gift to the village. And again, if you drive around the village and you see some trees that have stakes on the side and they're staked out, those were installed by volunteers. And at least for the first couple of years, that life will also be maintained by volunteers. So this is a really hard-working commitment that a group of people put in to the beautification and just the environmental quality of Rhinebeck. So a thank you to all of them and another successful, another successful planting day organized by our chair, Meg Crawford. So with that, I want to, I want to talk about the other thing, which is the plantings on Route 9, which has all come, sort of rapidly come together. So the commission has an opportunity to get some funding to potentially remove and replace trees along Route 9 that are damaged. These are the Norway maples and other such. Had a conversation with Gary. Basically, it sounds like right now the DOT project is looking at the ends of the village and not in the very center, let's say from Livingston, or excuse me, from Platt to south would be a rough area. And so what I'd like to ask the, the board is basically to authorize the commission, Tree Commission, to look at locating planting spaces in the brow, finding out, making recommendations for which trees, which tree should be removed, where their potential replacements can go. And then we would be looking into funding, seeing how we can get some funding for this. So Meg, do you want to add anything to the...
Well, yeah, actually, the offer was not just for Route 9. It was also East Market Street. Basically, it was the roads that are coming into town, upon which we have many, many, at this point hazardous Norway maples that are still standing in the median, which should be removed. These trees have just gotten worse and worse in terms of their health. And now many of them, like two that you just approved, but are endangering houses or endangering vehicles because of the way they've been cut and their load levels. And if we can get a lot of these trees removed without having the residents to have to pay for them, in addition to getting money to help replace them in an area that's not in the median anymore, but is in the brow, so it won't continue to have the same problem with these trees.
Can you, sorry, what is the, the median is between the sidewalk and the street? And then is the brow in sort of people's, like the edge of people's front gardens?
The brow is, well, it means beyond the right-of-way.
Oh, okay. That makes more sense.
So they, think about it, say, just for numbers, say a street's 25 feet wide.
Yep.
And then on each end of that width, there's like maybe a 10 to 12-foot right-of-way.
Yep.
That's part of, and this is beyond the right-of-way.
Got it.
So it is always on the inside of the sidewalk, on the property side of the sidewalk, as opposed to the roads at the sidewalk.
Okay.
And this is because you weren't here when this, when all this took place?
Right, move up.
I'm sorry. I just, for Lydia, New York State put in a very special set of laws such that tree plantings and some of this environmental stuff could be done on private property in the area just in the brow. It's a, it was actually started by the Thruay Authority because they needed to do plantings to stabilize areas around the thruway.
Right.
So they got, so they got permission basically to do that. And then it's been done in other states and it was expanded here in New York so that we're able to put these trees, consider them a public good for people on the sidewalk, for people driving down the street.
Yeah.
But it is on private property.
And there's a specific code in our law that covers that.
Okay. And do we have to get homeowner permission for that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Always do.
Okay.
So the question is, could it be done in stages so we're not taking everything down before we replant our, I don't know what, or is that going to be the proposal you'll come back with on how to stage it?
We will come back with a proposal, but do you mind if I...
Sure. Well, if you want to come up, it'd be better.
I was just asking about the mask.
No, you can take the mask off.
You can take the mask off once you're there.
So at this point, we would be looking to removing the trees that are the most dangerous trees on Route 9 and East Market Street.
But not in, excuse me, not in, because they're not Norway maples in the business sector. They're like a locusts.
I'm not talking about, that's a whole nother question. I'm not talking about the honey locusts.
Right.
And pear trees, which are the ones that are ripe in the core part of the village. I'm talking about the ones north, south, and east of the light.
Yes.
And removing the ones that are really dangerous and then replacing them not, not trees in the same place at this point, because that's probably the area that Brandy and all of you are going to be looking at in terms of, you know, this bike.
Traffic study.
Pedestrian. But beyond the right-of-way. Now, the exception for that would be on East Market Street because East Market Street does not have these beautiful big lawns.
Right.
And the only place to plant is in the median, usually. But we wouldn't be replacing them with trees that, we'd be replacing them with underwired trees, basically.
Shorter.
Shorter.
Yeah. So do we have this funding?
We don't have it in, basically...
It's been offered?
It was the Frost Foundation.
Okay.
It suggested that they would like very much to improve the entries into the village with trees. And in the process of doing that would help with removal, which is something that they don't normally do.
Great.
But we do need to get a proposal into them because it was supposedly for spring planting next year.
I mean, honestly, this seems like a bit of a no-brainer to me.
It's also political alpotato. Even with the disfigured Norway maple trees, it's sort of, there's going to be some people that don't want to lose their trees. I mean...
And that's why I asked the question, how do we stage it? There's only going to look at the most dangerous trees right now.
I'm going to only look at the most dangerous ones, but we also need, I need, I mean, we now have an inventory and we have a management plan, which has told us how hazardous these trees are.
Right.
It isn't just the Tree Commission here. This is a professional organization that looked at these trees for their hazard. And I think it's incumbent upon us to educate the public...
And act on it.
And act on it. Because it is a scary proposition. And I'm afraid that both homeowners and the village are going to be getting into suits if we don't take action on these trees, honestly. Because they're dangerous. A lot of them, very dangerous.
So you're going to...
So the question that I have, I mean, traditionally, if there is a tree in front of a homeowner's house that is in the village right-of-way, it is the homeowner's responsibility. The Tree Commission signs off on it, but it's the homeowner's responsibility to pay for it.
That's correct.
So now what we are encountering is a foundation who's willing to basically cover the cost to expedite that process.
That's correct.
And simply for the people on East Market Street and...
Montgomery.
And Montgomery slash Springbrook slash Mill slash Route 9. I mean, there, it's kind of a, I mean, there's an equity issue here, but at the same time, I don't know how we can say no to free money to help move along the process of replacing dangerous trees.
Well, I think this is, and this is something that I've been asking Rick and I would like the village board very soon. I think we need to address the whole question...
Right.
...of how we maintain our trees and who pays for it.
Right. Our urban forest that is in the village right-of-way. Yeah. I think that's an excellent...
Because it's, you know, to my mind, it's not fair that a person that might have an unhealthy tree in front of their house has to pay maybe $2,000 to have it removed when it's in the right-of-way.
Right.
And, you know, and another other person in the village just happens to be lucky and they don't have that kind of tree. But they're benefiting from the trees all along the streets. So I think it's a discussion that we have to have soon.
It becomes a budget item.
Yeah, no, I get, I get that. And it's sort of the same idea behind the sidewalk question. So these are things that everybody uses, but that the homeowners are specifically financially responsible for. And that does become an equity issue at some point.
So I think what I'd like to do, I'd like to proceed with getting a plan.
Yeah.
That we can at least look at a plan and decide how big or small or whatever, and then have the board review that to go forward with. So I'd like to make a motion that we at least start with getting a plan.
All right. Is there...
Do I have a second on that?
Oh, second.
Now I can discuss this. Thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah. Is there a deadline for the Frost Foundation in terms of getting...
I think we need a request into them probably by, I mean, they have a funding session in the spring and they have one in the fall. I was, we were hoping to get it for the spring. Because whatever we do here, we also have to get in terms of, we'll have to get approval from the DOT. These are state roads. So, I mean, they're usually pretty quick, but, in my experience, but we still need to go through that extra step.
And what's the approval DOT for?
Anything that's along their streets. We have to get approval for trees that we're putting in.
For to plant. Gotcha. Not to remove, but to plant.
Never had the habit of removal.
Right. That's why I was asking.
Even if the trees are beyond the right-of-way, we still need the DOT?
Um, no, probably not. Yeah. But the ones on East Market Street won't be.
Right, right, okay.
So I think we have a first, we have a motion, and the second...
I have one more coming. So we're going to rank the danger, to rank the severity of the problem of the tree removal?
And aren't they already ranked?
They've been ranked.
It's already there on the program.
In the management program, they've been, they've been ranked already.
Okay, so you're just going to pick out the ones that need attention right-of-way?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, some of them, I mean, this has been two years since that inventory was done. So some of them, because of Central Hudson and everything else, have gotten that much worse.
Right.
I mean, this year, we had Central Hudson come in. We had a gigantic growth year because of all the rain.
Yeah.
So after they pruned, all the branches that were left got that much bigger and heavier.
So now they're all going to rip off. Okay.
All right. So I'm in favor of having the Tree Commission come back with a plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Personnel. We only, we do have one person. Dave Seacor, our water plant operator, has been with us for three years. So congratulations.
Wastewater, yeah.
Yeah. So I said wastewater.
Three years.
What? So congratulations, Dave. You're doing a fine job. Glad to have you. All right. That ends all the regular business. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion? Do we have a motion purpose? Yeah, state of purpose.
Oh, that's you. Sorry.
Personnel.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. I'd like to make a motion to exit the executive session.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to enter back into our regular meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. As a result of the review, I'd like to make a motion that we seek and request to Civil Service a, for two wastewater plant maintenance mechanics to be approved by Dussel County Civil Service. And if so approved, we then move forward to work with two of our employees, number 27 and 25, to offer that to them once approved by Civil Service. All, second?
You want a second? You want a second?
Thank you, Grant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to close our meeting at 8:25 on November 9th.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.